Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Officially, my name is Dr. Mesplat, community journalist based in London here. So I'm your chair for today. For some of you are online, thank you very much. Please share the link and call your friends, your family, loved ones, and even younger. This is important. Sometimes it's important when we're listening to speech from great women. We learn a lot and we feel inspired and we can do similar things or things that we choose to do in our other lives. I would just like to welcome our guests here in the audience, which of course you online will see them later. You know, I want to introduce the one who is going to lead us in this meeting here. You know, I'm just here to facilitate and I'm very, very humble, Madame Femi Cole, to be here today. You know, and I feel honored and privileged to be by you. I've always had the opportunity of being a young journalist back then, 20 years ago, to be around Dr. Nima Ta, Dr. Mama Pratt, you know, these other women with far away and that. And now in my mid-40s, I'm still here again, happy supporting you, so I'm really humble. Now I'm out of tiredness, so we make a no guy. Last night I was at Missaboni Ambassador's and with your blessings, she alone win the Missaboni Ambassador's UK. That is we are moving forward. So I would like to call on my president from 50/50, even though we are not here for 50/50, but 50/50. We are here supporting a great woman and she have lots of things to offer to all of us, whether you're a man or you're an woman. So the president of 50/50, Madame Celia.
50/50 UK.
50/50. So she is the 50/50 president, UK. So you will not be seeing us talking here. It's, the cameras are all on our mom here, our next first female president, because we are behind Camilla Harris from United States of America. So that's why the way her is set up, it's specifically on her. So please just receive to her at the Celia voice, later you see at the Celia face. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mesplat, my wonderful second gem for 50/50 CEO UK. Right, thank you very much for that introduction. I just want to welcome everybody here. You know, the fact that you can just leave anything that you have and just say you are coming here to listen to Madame Femi Cole, who means a lot to us. We've never done all of this, you know. I'm also new with the party and everything, but we are so honored that people could even just say they are coming to listen to what we have to say. You all know you were here because of her and she is the leader for the Unity Party. And Madame Femi, we are really here, we are very happy to be here to support you. I heard your previous speech before saying to people, not to Femi one, unalepo de zena, Femi one de na in party. Okay, Missaboni government now, not to even one de na in party. They get people there, they not just even make too much noise, na action, na we get. And everything where they say, me feel say they come off on their heart. Na so the kind member, they mark where they are, even followers, you know, whichever way you call them, I feel say na so be there. But the person who we are here today for talk to, I mean for talk about, na an advocate and a politician. We don't hear he about him once or twice. I would, sorry, I would mix English and Korean. Yeah, because there might be other people, so we know they understand too much of an English, we will mix them, yes. So, yes, as I said before, she's an advocate and a politician and she's been around for a while. So nobody not say, you sabiam, yes, we sabiam. We don't be no sabiam from the last election. That is how I came for say, for communicate, or even communicate with Madame Femi Cole just too. She has done a lot behind the scenes. You know, they talk local, but in the past, you know, they be team for salon back and forth. So if people they want no more, instead we go get a speech on that, or tell people, they wait, you don't for salon, they will explain some of that. Now just no more, we not get the zena like this, for they go and announce everything what we do. The person we do and to, they not say he's doing. And then the one they will know that person, they say all go know zena, so this person we don't they do. But she has done so much and me I feel say he deserve for be a leader. You know, you they grab a new sense, say I want be leader, but other people they not believe in you, sometimes you believe in just yourself. But fortunately, people they do not believe in this person where they talk about. So do you make me listen and I will give a big round of applause for Madame Femi Cole just too. Thanks, Celia.
And Celia, you missed one part for it to this, you said, where we can change this. The other day, I they talk just flip and play. But you know, they say, we Blahma say, I was to me, it don't matter. I said, from 1961, when they born me, go get independence, we don't get man-man ticket. Man-man ticket. So why we for his eyebrows? If 2020, so they get woman, woman ticket. All man knock me down, eh, no, 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 no. She's 50/50, he say no way, it has to be side by side, side by side. He say we not the turn and be, we can never turn again. It should be side by side, I don't say that, I do not do. So I tell you a little bit about myself. I am the third child. Now pick you, you know, they get no photograph of himself. The first kid, they know, they all the pictures, they know, by the time we they can now, number one, me papa be one boy picking. So the first one girl, the second one girl, you know, above, say this one, this way they can be me boy picking. So I can't turn out back for be another girl. So by that end, now you know where to hold me down though. So me mama can go in a them box, they go find their own picture, they picture where he is, he the person face, he say no, na you this. I say, okay, no to do. All the picture then, na yinka NBC, yinka NBC, the two way, the no venti. So me na that third child, where you get for raise your voice for let they hear you. You get for for let you come before, so for me are small. They ask, say, why politics? What happened? By profession, I'm a nurse. I did intensive care for over 20 years in America. I worked at over 16 different hospitals all over America. And then I go for go support BC in a clinic. The hospital, Dr. Cole, your school, Bill and me mama, they left. So BC na the doctor in charge, Nina Dean, now I can put and say, make gone, because I act for season nowadays. And politics don't make, but whenever and they need me, I can go. But I don't know, we can say, nurse, 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 all there, they say me na nurse, me na nurse. So eventually, I'm thinking, I they think to myself, say, no, Femi, you get for, what else to go able for do for let you get a broader vision of which you know. So I not make it public. In fact, I think that only the close family may then do. Say, I go online and I go to political science. So and now instead, now we get political science further than the cap, where one me party tell me, say, Femi, why you think you need for go to political science? You say, ask her politics, you ne la. African politics, you know, to the way they teach. But when I begin go inside the cars, I realized that he was gone. Boku team then, they way, I learn, especially in terms of being a leader, in terms of how the whole world operates. It was not wasted, it was time and money well spent, where it make me, in fact, the leadership of COP, where I become the chairperson. We get one COP member, say, who they are, Susan from NPD, Susan Williams, thank you very much, Susan, for being here. It changed me whole leadership skills, right in the middle of being chair of COP. I begin learn vocal lessons, I begin for implement some of the things that we had to learn, where our hope made me a better chairperson. I have two children. The eldest is Nadine, I'm sure Nadine is watching, you know, go online for Kage, and Alex, where I'm sure Alex definitely watch. Both are grown up, they no longer need mommy for anything day to day, just for support and love. And I have my sisters. I get Mika, the 1994 born, and then Dr. BC, then me, then Yemi, where you know, none day between, in fact, say, na, we do all the setting up of the Facebook thing and everything. And then Anissa, the last born, so we are all girls. So one thing where people they can tell me all the time is, you, you na man kwe. I don't decide, say, I not like that term there anymore. So when they can tell me, say, you na man kwe, I can say, you know, you na woman, we come up high. The man they we kwe, and they boku, we they see they na teeth, we they see they na the community. So I can one say, na woman we come up high. So for years, I they can only then African talk, I they watch the political atmosphere, I they watch the development, na Saya Leo. And I always feel curious for know, each time where you travel, go in a order, especially African countries, where you come back salon, you always agreeted with this feeling that you just come inside some village. You not ever go back, you say, I mean, anybody may go Nigeria 10 years ago, we go Nigeria now, or Ghana. You remember when we in the last Ghana, eh, perhaps? So we then a Ghana taxi, they see where they go and they pass, that the older na the taxi, those days are gone. All these other African countries don't move ahead, but so what is wrong with me? How we capable for do things differently? What we capable do? One day, I will see a land na wunye. I see don't, we come on na wunye, that end, they not go na this many airports. You see all the bafa, 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 bafa. You come out of the airport, nice, I know what you mean. We need more women in politics. At that moment, I decide say, I they go inside politics. When I come back in line, what come back America, I begin look now for see, whose political party are they joining? My intention, not to be for start a political party, not to be my intention that day. I they look around for see, whose party, whose side they go put me ankle. You know where you hold ankle, where the fisherman, it is, it is, it is round and now, it is fellow side, it goes center. I look both sides. I look around. I realize that all the parties are all male-dominated. They're all in a male-dominated political parties. So I say, no, 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 no. If you want for see change, did change. I decide say, we reform. Unity Party, the name just came to me, I not be even know, say, like we, and my Unity Party did it, I didn't know at that time. I can salon now, for can start this whole process, I be feel to say, oh, for start political party, no, nothing. You feel before, you go there, hey. That was my first experience for no say, yes, indeed, the institutions of Saya Leo are broken. God bless, where we office they near PPRNC office. Now don't they go for breakfast, now don't they go for lunch, now don't they go for dinner. No order, no system. Go, come, go, come, make so, first we for be a movement, we go, we go do all to for be movement. To become a political party in Saya Leo, we see, then they use flipant language for say, they want to register political parties, it's an effort. Because no to simple process, where you go feel to say, it is easy, Susan Williams can testify, she's here. You can testify too. Starting a political party in Saya Leo, if na follow up on twins, I'm sure it would have been a easier process. And twin boys for that matter, it might have been a easier process. Finally, finally. First, no, first, I tell you say, we make some two, three mistake, we not been do this, we not been do that. But eventually, we did all of it. We able for get a certificate. And I mean, the joke, people, I mean, they provoke me, I think I was something of a joke at that time. Say, who's, so who's selection, you say you are contest for a give, I mean, na 2018 or who's year you? Because the hurdles were so high that 2018 seemed impossible. Hotatawa. Atawa, and I not get a single ounce of regret for 2018. I lost proudly. I was a proud loser. The day after the elections, I was on IRN radio, people in shock, people in the can of news, so man, they, you know, person die, who you can't, they are, oii. Oii, mommy, I show. And I'm sitting there and I'm thinking, huh? Did I lose somebody? Are my children safe? My sisters are safe? My cousins are safe? My friends are safe? Huh? I lost an election. If at first you don't succeed. Try again. So I, I not get one moment, I can tell you honestly, as I stand before you, that I was discouraged. That first election, mine fooled me tank. Because I think that first election, I was literally running on, eh. Me and the team, we ready up line, we look the motor can in time, one fear nodding. Then don't dance for you, dance for you, dance for you, you don't put money, you don't put money, you don't put money, say, you don't put your fear money all now for can't talk like. So that was my education. And I have absolutely no regrets. And I said, I say, wherever I am, I was a proud loser. And God only has you where he wants you, at any given time and moment. So that was my first, that was my baptismal. That was my baptismal by water. And then I had my baptismal of fire. Because I have a belief that you fear God. And you fear God, not just where people can see you fearing God, but when you are alone, in your bed, with your head on your pillow, you fear God. You don't fear man, you tell man the truth. You tell him the truth in a way and a manner that you want to be told the truth. They say, census. I said, we are not getting for census. I say, point me, no point me, no to police case. And they said, for that, I should be introduced to Hotel CID? They took me to CID, they interrogated me. But I should have said me na fish there. You want ask me the question, then you back man, say, give me the answer. I say, I not attend SSU, I was educated. If it on secondary school for that. When you ask me the question, patiently la answer. Then when they don't write, waiting them feel to say, you say, they, I say, give this back to me. When they give them back to me, I say, don't paraphrase me, write me word for word. Meanwhile, supporters were there for APTI, they all me, they, then they pardon me. Oh, me had to know one. That's not a, oh, July 3rd, I guess, where they can of news, I they tell unakoto. That was my baptismal by second fire. I said, I say, you are not ready for a census. I am speaking the truth to you. All man say, unano yeti for census, why am I here? Then carefully go, that's a, they begin lost one one, where the all don't lost, nine, ten, I think Dennis been there, nine, they say, Femi, you look like saying, they they keep you. Everybody was in a panic. Menkae, masaya, been there, I think ambassador, yes, and I said, been there, oh, boku people, I they ma call you, boku way, I say, all man be there inside you. Now you can whisper na the ears. I say, inside say. Koko day, they there. I say snake, they there, they say no. I say na mortal man, they there. I say, so waiting there all this. If na they God wants me today, na they are there, bye-bye. I go na the cell, I go, I meet the man them, I will only do, I engage with me fellow prisoners them, from RASH, I make friends, say today, now they give me, mommy, mommy call, mommy call, I want me there na cell, I try you there. I do, they keep company, then they get phone call, where the night shifts, prison where they make can, they get phone call. They say, mommy call, I see say get month, and for go lock me na cell, poker. Not a big parlour, I don't know anybody there, we don't go see here. They say, not a big parlour, again, I for go now, na cell. I kid you not, if you put your finger, so you know this here. It's a concrete slam, na like three or four cells, that's I me, then one big cell, no more. The lady not start me, young Titi. They say, if I go to cell, she literally was pushing, they pushing me with me back up, for going. First, I fix, I look, I look, I'm gonna shake it there. It just sound, I say something, just say, Femi, just please, just calm down, just calm down. I go, I say me na own thing, I say, I go for the peace, pass, pass. They say, we will be, we will get. I say, okay. Lock me inside this cell. I did inside this cell now. The kind anger, Jesus Christ, the kind bitterness. I say me the first interview, when we there, hey, I begin plan now, you know, the revenge. Why I don't plan, me and the massacre, then the hurt, I they watch now, for the change there, I they watch two side, they can the dog, I don't plan out, I say, on this, I get for sit up, na concrete, and get there Ebola, I stick the way they bread, bread. I say, this, I don't know, I go for sit up, I don't plan this, that is, for the place, what? I be sweat like cow, I go, now. Now, out of the blue, something just came into my head. It says, Femi, I kid you not, I am not making this up. Now see Mandela did this for 27 years and he came out without bitterness, without anger. Be still, just be still. They cannot do better because they do not know better. Now relax. I just, I just can't. You not even watch, you not even know nothing, no concept of time, whether na one hour, whether na two hours. I was just like, with my thoughts and I learned lessons in that moment. Waiting people who are convicted of injustices, how do they feel? People who were executed for crimes they never committed, how do they feel? I said, God wants me to be here to experience this. After some time, oh, 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 mommy call, mommy call, mommy call. I miss you, the peace, pass, pass, now, we can go na bad thing, I say, I know answer. This night, before he, she was very disrespectful, the way way he send me go inside this cell. But apparently, what me fellow business them tell me later, is that when he don't go na go, when he go there, go meet them, because she just came on duty. So where he go, go report, and then he got, he no instructions, so he can, he can with he own power. Now you na go tell her now, who that a be? They say, we na tell them, na, so you only. Mommy call, mommy call, can't wait, mommy call, I miss you, I was, mommy call. They mark to, they go find other person, then I even they tell her now, the mommy know they answer me? I they talk to her, the mommy know they answer me? They go call other person, for let I can meet me for talk to me. Say, mommy call, we don't get mess, we don't get instructions, they say, for pull you. I say, no, pull me. Now you na can open the door, now open the cell, now we can inside. Now I say, mommy call, burn me. Say, burn me. That was when I stood up. Now I say, what she go? She gave me her age, late early 30s. That's a one for tell you something, no matter whose job you they do, you they deal with mortal man. You get mama, you get sister, you get auntie. I say, treat even the prisoners as human beings. I not want for let that lesson, they be just for me, because you recognize who I am. I said, anybody that crosses your path, you treat with respect, you treat with humanity. I say, but tell the one they listed, they can pull me now, I am comfortably where I am. I let it go. That was my first experience. Okay, so I first of all, I have to say, big thank you to ona all, where ona come, ona left. Boku important, see the way they do, even the one they way they on Zoom, on Facebook Live, have left important things for tuning and for listen. So Unity Party is what we're going to start talking about. As I said earlier, Unity Party, we former, we contested first election, the second election, we were disqualified. We were disqualified based on fictitious grounds, no reason whatsoever. Then just look with pain, I think we seem to be something of a threat, then disqualified. But I can assure, I say, we've done all with due diligence, we get all the five offices, we give them a financial report, we even care them court, for who say, if we the lie or ona the lie, unakos this case. And the case is still with Adrian Fisher, we haven't had a conclusion. We never had our day in court, for now, we go to defend itself, we never did. But anyway, be that as it may, as a party, we threw our support behind Dr. Samwar. So what we want for see with Unity Party? Earlier, I mean, I say, I only want to see we as a party, I only want to see the possibilities that exist within the Unity Party. And Celia is my advisor, as I say, you not introduced herself properly, she's my advisor. And we now have executives in all the districts. The only area where we executive team needs for plumber is Palaba. And for that one, they will go Palaba, then we know the reason why. It's the most inaccessible of all the districts in Saya Leo. But we want for years up to membership, we want for years up to membership. And in doing so, we get certain key areas, and we want for focus on, on how we're able for grow the party. We have challenges, but in you having, in having a leader who has been voca and being the head of, being the chairperson of COP, I don't work with other political parties, I don't work with the leadership across the board, except for the party in government, we don't work with it all. So we have an idea, waiting it will take, for let we able for move, we as a party forward and for join the family of oppositions in totality. So what's in our plan? We go let forget A and a diaspora branches, we go let for create think tanks, where we can able for, now, it is for criticize, it's harder for them come up with a positive plan. now, it is for criticize, it's harder for them come up with a, a, a positive plan, like if we say we want for criticize the education system. We can get a think tank, and the beauty of, um, the internet now is, we all know that for dinner at the same place, we can look at the problem, we begin for proper solutions, so I want for let, Unity Party, we actually begin for publish. It can be an e-magazine, or an e, uh, physical two page or three page, and where we, say this month, we decide, say, the issue, the biggest issue is the flooding, we can do an article on that, publish and put them out on, on social media, for let people see, so we have people behind the scenes, or even in front of the cameras, who are thinking, these are the plans for the flooding, this is the plan for the power, this is the plan for markets, whatever it is we decide. So, if we ha- have the membership, if people able for take membership and come on board, then we can able for do that. But when you're growing, it is more difficult, they said it takes a village to raise a child, trust me, it takes ten villages to raise a political party. And, um, the party been there na mostly, but right now, we're, I think we're, we're almost ready to sit our, um, um, little bakery. M P S. I think we, we're good for M P S, but if we have more people putting hands underneath the party, then the party can grow, and the party can be on a solid footing. That's for the think tank, then we, so the think tank, we're looking at also having probably damage to the in-ground, eh, like a solutions council. Where if something they be, rather than like, oh, go, they talk, say this not go right, that not go right, we actually come out with maybe four lines or five lines, that this, this and that. Now, a typical example was the ID cards, when I say ID cards, I came out with something on Twitter, where I say, it's a hundred and forty-five thousand for ID cards. If you go up line, you give somebody ten thousand, you've given them a lot of money. So, in demanding a hundred and forty-five thousand, it's a lot of money, not everybody will be able to afford it. And I have worries about that, but I will come back to that. And then, of course, we have financial issues, where it is a miracle that we went through an election and we are where we are. Um, but that is another thing, where if you have members, paying membership, you know, you begin to build up a reservoir, small reservoir of cash, where we will give for beating there. Because the main thing where we done they do, from, actually, from when we come back home from America, I meet my sister, the lawyer, to the hospital, that was medical outreach. Personally, I have been to every single district, some districts, I've been to every single chief doctor, I don't do medical, now every single last chief doctor. One time, I come up line, they come, no matter what they say for you, I acquired the taste for Pamua in on my first, part of my first degree in twenty eighteen elections. So, I stop, I see this man, they come with this, um, in Pamua, and so we stop him, he come in the car for selling give me. Oh, me, I sabi you, now you may can't get to in a some, some, some village, so as Celia says, they know, they see. They have a feeling, what we have got, even where I go, the other time, I go, what will they look for office, I go, Henemah Market, I go, Makini, people actually remembered me from the medicals that we did. So, but that takes a lot of money too, for that, and then I'm in the political, social, corporate, whatever responsibility, but that too we can extend, because what I discovered during the medical is, we have a lot of cases. Clef, we have a lot of haniya, so we do haniya as a free for people them, but getting a surgeon for me, they pay to do was the biggest problem, there's so much in demand, they not been they turn off. So, we did quite a few free haniya surgeons, then they come, they pay for themselves, the way they go, we give them transport for the two-way journey back. So, we did a lot of clef, and we did, clef we do with another organization called Smile Game, so down the back, they not begin morning, they say, there's surgeons, they want come back salon, so for let we speed up. But now traveling in Sirelune is very expensive, with the trail and everything, so, then I want to move directly people in support. Then, um, I want to talk now about the elections. The elections, the signs were there early. Very early, the signs were there as early as the, um, voter, no, the census. The voter registration was very traumatic. Then come for arrest me maybe three times in three different centers, I went to this Clive Home, once, I mean, they love me. They said the people were not Sirelunians. The man they talk fluent, whether it was Timmy or Limba, I can't remember which, fluent, they say not so Sirelunian. So, there was a concerted effort to disenfranchise people. And that is something where we fully keep in the focus of our minds, it was done with impunity. All of a sudden, our birth certificate in Sirelune, I declare it. All of them are here, all of a sudden. Then they say the genuine one, I get one, the genuine one, I get green one, the genuine one, I get pink one, and then they even came to ID cards. Me personally, I called the, the eight hundred number, the hotline. Say once, and the way the man not even cut off the phone. Now, now mommy back, now we normal, I look like I the call sound, you know, no say, his phone was not off. But each time I called them, I thought it was a test. So, down the back, I put them at the side, we're going to come back to that. And then, we are all pitted up about the traper tight. We are all concerned about the traper tight. Expectations were raised to almost unrealistic levels. I did one interview now we had, they asked me. I answered honestly. People are phoning for say, damamina kill you, I kill you eh? Ona wonder mommy there, ona kill you, I kill me, then just end the show, say, for let me come on a, the computer, I go offend, or I work for do, because it was a truth, they didn't want to hear. The reason we make, I not been get any optimism. If man and wife get Palaba na house, me na got mommy. Wife don't hardly complain, the man don't hardly complain, I say well, I de canna house, son eh, like I'm for TV. I canna house. They are, they wife not there. The man not there. Us case, I de go cut, I de go ask to be killed, they were there. In a conversation about an election, gone stop, gone go. Is C S N, let them forget this year. So, for me, no is C S N, no conversation. If ona not able for come and can tell we the public, you have been promoted to class seven, what are they class two? And what am I doing in class seven? Well, show me my exam paper, no, nah, no serious, I pass. So, I had very little hope. I prayed that a miracle could come from somewhere. But the foundation, they don't learn from census. And ladies and gentlemen, the foundation continues to be lead. For those who can see, and for those who can hear. How much energy will we spend fighting amongst ourselves? Whilst we're doing that, the enemy is strengthening itself. So, on the traper tight, that is all I have to say. From the first, it was problematic, to this point, it still remains problematic. So, and the thing I've been right here is, we put all our eggs in one basket with the traper tight. With attention come up, and beaucoup other team. For me, now, it is, the situation cannot be helpless, cannot be hopeless, and we cannot be helpless. We cannot afford to be helpless. I want for let, people them, where they talk about a third force, a third force, a third force. Sometimes, a fresh set of eyes is a good thing. Sometimes, when you don't do inside the system, eh, it is sometimes difficult, and you go actually see obstacles that you can easily overcome, but you see them as such huge obstacles that you cannot win it. Now, they read this now, what is the way forward? How did we get here? How do we get out of here? How on earth can we fix it? What's in our role as Sirelunians living in Sirelune and Sirelunians living abroad? I have clear ideas. So, I want for let people are begin for, when they talk about a third force, I want for let people are thinking of Unity. No, picking a way for my mama and Bella, today, a run, man for tomorrow. A run, a creep, a tete, a waka, before a run. Unity Party is working with a waka. But we can only run if people are begin for believing in me. Believe in the leadership. And that's the work of setting our unity, is we want to have like a leadership council. Because probably they way, we have learnt a message, when all the power and all the popularity, yes, with one person. And we not say we not get from this unity party, I'm not going to leave Unity Party at all. But what if I die? And what if a third force is a good thing for Sirelune? So, I, it, it not possible for let, I mean, I'm going to be the most unhappy dead body on earth, if I not say we are the die, and the enemy party go with me, no. It's about the legacy. We need help for actually build the legacy of Unity Party, so that Unity Party can survive when I'm gone. But how for do that? We need the support of everybody, diaspora, back home, and I want for let, ona begin for you, see Unity Party, don't see through us. Where somebody go, they say, you know, we need a third force, and you're looking at me, directly at me, we need a third force, we need a third force, and I'm looking at you, and I'm like, am I a mouse?
We are all the third force.
Am I a mosquito? I'm right here. And I am passionate about Sirelune, because the possibility of Sirelune is. Sirelune should be the wealthiest country in Africa. Because when we compare ourselves to even Rwanda that people are praising, Rwanda merely has coffee. Coffee. So, when we look at that possibility there, we not to that, you know. When you travel in Sirelune, but put in a way they strike you. The poverty, the level of poverty and the level of hunger, don't make like as Sirelunians living in Sirelune. With a loss with morality. With a loss with integrity. With a loss with ethics. And when people talk about the Athens of Africa, what were they talking about? It wasn't just education, it was principles. It was moral character. When person telling this, you can take it to the bank. We have lost it. So, not to say we are losing it, we have lost it. So, we need, and why have we lost it? It's, we, it's blame from way back, where?
Corruption.
Corruption has now been normalized. They foot a ball on it. It is now a way of life. You they see small, 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 small picking, where you not they expect. Picking, and they go write exam, then they write their phone number for the one where they for Maca. Whatever services you want, I will deliver, for as long as you might keep your mind. So, we have lost it. What can we do? We, we, want to see a difference in Sirelune, we need now to begin to hold them accountable. Call anybody where they protesting a salon, ask a Uda na ona, MP na ona here. No idea. And this, eh, 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 Rondo, we pray, I begin land, so I've learnt a lot. This particular government we have in place, has a level of impunity that has never been seen before in Sirelune. Where you're looking at the wrong, and you make it right. You're looking at the wrong, and you tell yourself, and you are believing in yourself, that it is right. How do we break that chain? How can we say that right is right and wrong is wrong? What can we do as a people? I say, we begin to organize. We all, we get for begin for organize. We say we're protesting. They kill who they can, they arrest who they can. You never get to be in court. A man walks in with his own two legs, and he comes out in a wheelchair. So, what do we for do? And I think that Unity Party, we able for champion some of the ways that we can make a difference. One, me, I was have the all the MPs there in Apollo, and two side, tapus side, I relate, what have you done in your village? What have you done in your village? Let us see, cabinet ministers, what are you doing now? Where is your, you, you go see person they talk, eh, drag ya, I don't wanna in the village, let us see your village. Are the people eating? Are they living, or are they merely existing? So, when we begin for, call them by their names, you are seated there in the house of parliament, you are the servant of the people. Now, we send you boarding. But we are not holding them accountable, we're letting them run like kids, like court fight. So, I think Unity Party, one thing we, I would like for let we organize this, beginning to hold them accountable. We they begin for get regular town hall meetings all over Sirelune. Eh, na fatwa, they give you so one get regular meeting, no, it's acceptable, you say we shouldn't protest. So, let us begin to have regular town hall meetings, where we they begin for get information and share information, and hold those people accountable. So, I'm going to take a short break, my vice would like to have say a few words. Deputy, my deputy, or, you know, for the same vice eh?
Yeah, because we have space open for others, like I always say, um, me, I believe in fifty fifty, I believe in fairness. So, eh, don't mention about women, waiting, waiting, making up for the women, women, I totally agree, man, no day. But if we get beyond the sidewalk, now we said they complain, but right now, say, we not get that, where they call us women, so we say for this place, for say, if man want hand, man, this time, we're all man party, but then we should have a space, in the long run, if nothing happen, then yes. So, then we say, then they talk, now we not join, or now we not there. So, the things only one mention, I not say it gets a, it's free but full of information there, but I, I don't want to go too far from waiting the, the whole meeting there about, eh, she mentioned me- membership. We're very, very important, we not the first people for shopping, but we the beg people for join. We the ask for, some people can just come there as followers, which is acceptable, some person not just wants, eh, I mean, eh, this, the person tell you, they change your mind, now other side want go, so that's open as well. Then we the try for do a WhatsApp group. We want for name as friends of Technically your School for now, Unity Party in bracket, so now from there, they begin get that momentum, they, they see who that one be, that one be. The most important we want for do from the UK side, I forget a UK executive, because it was easy for me for having tickets from this side, then we hear you say, forget somebody back where they, you know, and relay information to Sirelune, because the whole thing, we would get for taking this now salon, not to hear. Here, we just they make that base, for let people there, no say, I know, fami, this not ever happen eh, you, you can not ever get a meeting, no, UK. Okay, so you see, so long we clap for, we say, because this is a great move. This is a one step up, it has never happened, so it is now happening, and things are going to be happening. Where the people they see things that happen, then they say, aha, we don't see this happen, yeah, da, I don't beg and say, let me try, make them do so in America as well. Because then two major side, I mean, the smaller side, you go you come to Belgium, or Brussels, or whatever, then say they back, so then you cook, and they go away, person go say for engage with. So, then we cook then, they go away, person go say for engage with. Some, some people that we really want, people then can register, he mention sensors. If you not know the sensors, madam, please, I'd like to correct here, some people get for register, for they on the, for, for they part of that county.
No, when they go to their host, na fiton, then go ask them questions, then they add them na the list of people that we tap na that must be.
Right, okay, so part of, being part of that sensors, so they know they easy not to Sahelionian. And then they want to know who come from Sahelion.
No, the number of people.
See, what put in me not know how they learn here always. Okay, so, yeah, I know it's about counting, yeah, but then, yes, so, so. Okay, so, yes, so then we, we, if people they want, we take numbers, names and numbers, who go put on the WhatsApp group. So, please, before we go, they will get na names and number, me not have be everybody, there are some people in the world have be. In fact, I will just put the automatic, but I know they ask them. You know, I don't say they want make their name, they go, we we want there somebody, we put somebody somewhere we want there. So, of course, if you want for abstain, they go say, no, it's here, they didn't at the background, we're acceptable. Abstain they go, we not say things will go. So, now then, yeah, I know, we just think of while he go continue for talk, I just hit on them one day, yeah? It's very important for us to think about it. The UK executive, we really intend for go on today, so maybe, madam, maybe this job will be take half two. We can try for see how we can use that time, because we are only there till three. Yeah?
So, what else are the job where you, where we fit good? I mean, for Le, we as it were, take our power back. One, what you know they happen so far in terms of the impunity is Sahelion don't sign all kind UN treaty. We are signatories to all the UN treaties. And from treaty then they, where they protect you. But when they do their scoring, Sahelion scores high. Then Nada scores and then they take, they bluff me, well, look we score for this, look we score for that. Why does that happen? It happened because we know they lay the complaint to the right side. And one particular, uh, um, see the way they call the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. And then they then get another section forty where address individuals can make complaints to the UN. There is a format for Le we de complain. Then kill people then, then beg the leke, whether they beg cat goat, we not a complain. Then arrest people, then they keep their teeth with them, please, then release them, we not a complain. Then shoot people in inside party offices, we not a complain. We get Parliament, we get judges, we get Peace Commission, we get Human Rights Commission, we get Campaign for Good Governance, we get Entirely Just Council. So, when we don't do you want say, I say, eh, I do one above, I do one back, na above. They're only, we tell you they're only for the five days, na above. So, how Una fit et we, we need for begin, for Le complain to the right places. If not, they not know. And we are signatories, Sahelion sign that we can congregate, we can protest, we can talk, we have freedom of speech. That is not just Sahelion nineteen ninety-one constitutional, it is international chapters that Sahelion, it's a signatory tool. But because we do not complain. When they hate us, they say we are the most peaceful, we are the most obedient, we are the most doco, we are the most good food, we are the most calm. So, ladies and gentlemen, we get for begin for Le complain when we send letters. And where you guys can help us, especially if we have a really vibrant UK branch, is when an injustice occurs, we do a letter. It can be the very same letter, it is sent to all these commissions. When they do nothing, when they not do nothing, we send it to the UN, there is a format for it. Yes. Yes. So, we're going to, so now let us touch on one. The celebration of mediocrity. We as the people, for them on the race day back home, we're guilty. When they say we need to change our perspective, we need for change our attitude, they're not wrong. We will see the most corrupt individual, which we the hell, we the prison, we the predator for our. So, there has to come a time when we hold them accountable. When Abu Abu talk them in flamethrower, further, there were no but wait, Abu Abu may say, he got a slap on the wrist. When it was discovered parents' wife was stealing, it was stealing. It was not taken, it was not borrowing, it was not lending, na beetie. He got a slap on the wrist, he is back now as the clerk of Parliament with a title in front of his name, honourable. When Kai Kai go na video, he de talk out here for kill people then, if he not go. I spent five days for saying that the women have a right to protest the price of food. I did five days. I didn't get a day in court, I wasn't charged. I was punished for a crime I did not commit. Kai Kai, a slap on the wrist. When the auditor generals called things by their proper names, she sacked. Will I complain? There is a structure developed by the UN for Le we be for Le complain. And if Unity Party begins to take the lead on some of these things, you want know whether we in a third force or we not a third force, we go show na say we in a third force. A thinking third force, a planning third force, a force for, a, a third force with integrity, a force with passion. If not, come twenty twenty eight. Ebu. Apushi, I take a lunch Monday, Tuesday, Apushi, I eat a lunch, Ebu. Mommy, no bother make lunch for me, I don't make food, I live at school, I don't say to go there lunch. That's where we are. So, we have to, we must engage. And we must all engage. If not, our children, our grandchildren, we hear Sahelion, they, they're not going even call on Sahelion, they say Africa, I'm from Africa. So, we will take a break and we will hear from you guys.
Thank you, thank you very much. I refuse to call you Madame Fermi. I will continue to call you our next first female president of Sahelion. From your lips, yes.
From your lips.
From the heart of.
To God's ears, yes.
So, um, ladies and gentlemen, in session here in person, thank you very much for coming again. And those who are on Facebook, send your questions if you want to ask more about the, um, party. And for those who are on Zoom, send your question on Zoom. You know, we have another, um, official there that is going to read your questions. So, we've cover everywhere, so you can see that the next first female president of Sahelion is in tune with the Gen Z's out there, that is the young people, technology. She's very well to do with technology. And let me just recap with what she stated here, I will go inside, you encounter English, small, small. So, I think the most aspect of this meeting is for us to see her as, not just her, but to see her as an individual who is representing all of us here and the entire Sahelion there, how there, you know. Um, she made mention of, um, the councillors, that is our local councillors. Majority of us, we don't know who our local councillors are, you know. She made mention of the members of Parliament, majority of us, we don't know who these people are. And the ministers, district, um, government officials, we don't know. But I would just break it down to the councillors, to members of Parliament and the local resident ministers, you know. Uh, it is our responsibility, like the next best female president of Sahelion stated, that we have to question them. What is in their manifesto? In their manifesto, it have been tell, we say that they can't do if they win, they become a councillor. But it, Sahelion has become like a space where there is this social grabbing of status whereby and they can be councillor, and they can be MP, and they can be minister, for let me say, you know, people, let me say, mean at this. It has become a social thing. Back then, where I am president of Karabah General, I'm born in the eighties, right? And I grew up in President Karabah General, where have President Karabah taught us to work hard before you get acknowledged for what you work. But these days, anybody can come out, we will see popular business, man, just come, I say one be president. And not get the know how, not get administrative skill, and this gone down to all of this. So, we already in Ayam, we already online, you know, the next first female president, I mentioned this. It is our responsibility as Sahelionians, it doesn't matter if you're not, if you're registered to a political party, to ensure that you look at the manifestos, what you are saying, and they do it and come inside, what you don't do in the first three months, six months and one year. And then, we we self now will say, okay, I have enough information now. And even though it can be very difficult for Le people to take you see your, see Sahelion, especially when your party is not in power. But I think this highlight that she has highlighted here, I've not had this for a very long time. Because when I was in President Karabah government as a young journalist, I was APC background. But they make sure I have that here, appear United Nations, House of Commons, China, Japan, I have over one hundred countries. In my twenties and they didn't look at me, I'm from APC background. They look at me, I have something to offer, they look at me that as a young person, I can bring in project. I came with the first project in Sahelion to support young women in politics. And we went to have the, all the district, twenty five thousand pounds, I was just twenty two years. So, I understand what she's saying, we have to target the young, the me, and all ages. People who have the potential to question people. Really, you just say I would, I says okay, but here I'm not demonstrating my weakness, I'm demonstrating what has been vested in me by other evil women like our next just president here, you understand? Let's ask questions. Then we say, oh, inquisitive, ask question, what you don't do, this suppose they na far, what you don't do? These are the things that so they make an effective change. As we are all here, we have one mission is to support Unity Party, I just want you to take this home place. Remember, you have one mission and supporting Unity Party. How you start to do that is by actively engaging in these different communities of few people in Sahelion to know what and what development has happened, what you have been to happen with their local representative, they are not a do. So, with that, I will stop here, the journalists, I don't like talking too much, yeah? So, the floor is on to you now, open session, open mic, and any question?
I want add one thing, yes, we, Una na diaspora go for Tarapan, and that is diaspora voting.
Yeah, that question have been.
Yes, they will not, Una get for pack pressure. There is nothing in the constitution that forbids diaspora from voting. The only thing they have to do is put the administrative structures in place. We now have embassies in places that I don't know if our planes even fly there. We have embassies, we have high commissioners, we have deputies all over the world. So, for them to do the administrative structures, we must put pressure on there. The money where Una de remit go saloon, it plenty.
So, we're going to the first question, one minute, let's just turn the camera. Yeah. Yes, and the next one, the gentleman at the back, sir, you, sorry, you'll be the second, you will be the next one after her. Okay, go on.
Because we the spra, na we place send we morning them out there, correct? And it tells all of them party, they're waiting for, the one way they come on here, so and we people that where they they friends coming every day. We go there now, so we the struggle, we go manage by the go, go for send for people then back home and friends. And we go saloon, we sell saloon there, you know, go there, you get one cent, you know, one cent and back home for you people there. So, we say for we vote, we get for vote, other African, because we the still again election, then they votes now, so. So, we go like for me, now I will be number one, eh, when we the try, and we say, as you say, we say we put pressure on side now. And the other thing, why I, I the talk not to concerning party votes, na this, um, cush business, nasaloon? Because again, me Bobo, we in a thirty four years, he go grammar school, private school, he go, um, early back. He don't finish, he not get job, but now he don't go into cush.
Sorry. It's sad, it's sad.
And I don't really try, immediate to Pastor Mahoy, I go last year, and we pull at the way don't better, he go back. And he still, and people that they come with within condition. He get time for sleep, he get horse, for day, he get food for eat, he get everything. But it's like this cush gets a power. And the one, you know, and I not see now, also the nasaloon, where if not to you picking, like what I picking, like party picking, like sister party, where you not affect.
Affect everyone.
The one that where they, where they can and go, na saloon, not to them, they, they, they put pressure on, and one that we the seller. So, I believe say, if this therefore store, na the one that where they can and go. Because if the one that where they can, they not can, the one that where they sell, not the seller.
Yes, thank you.
The big people in nasaloon, that the seller didn't pick him, and now they get the points them, we know of that. So, they're not the old man, they will get the port, then the old man will go take up, where you not really go. And picking and this stuff I be locked, I go to Pastor Mahbo, Pastor Mahoy, in place where they do, I go the October, I cry, I cry, I cry. Because this moment, they can't tell, oh, are they any back, are they FBC, I may find now here, you see the potential in the Bobo there, really. You be girl picking. Then they they, they only can go, then they talk to them, they figure, they can't say, hey, look, look where Una look good, look where the one they say, oh, um, in the robe, na church. Like finally, I think the other one with the cush, he beat eh, 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 uncle, he pull a tick, he say, Mama say, if you tick lock, we not come on. If you uncle a tick lock, we not come on that place there. So, you see them, you see big big man, big big responsible man, where if you open a bank, he there with cush. It's so, so sad. Because if all them future leaders, future, um, people then, like they want me there, they're all going to drugs. Who, who that go, who that go stand, pass the same politician people picking them, and then back for come, back again for come, rule them. And then they give them fifty thousand, we not go buy anything and go buy drugs, sleep, not go wait for do, then they na streets.
Yeah.
And then they really they suffer. I was sorry, I comment, last week, one died, so then they beg the other one, another one died, whether they beg this week. You know, so if they kill them, so if all the future leaders there, they don't die, who that go, who that go go, where, eh, move.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, yes, thank you so much. So, Madame Fermi, we've got one question, which is, yes, which is around the cush. Yes, no, we're going to, we have, which is around the cush, it's very, very important to address that. And secondly, the voting, but I will have the gentleman to ask so that I believe there you can then, yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think, um, we are gonna say, I think, um, I'll say this, um. Uh, I think, we are the look, the uh, the question, right from the bottom. So the question is around there, you are there, not to the top, uh, the social last one. Um, so we look at eh the party, right from the eh the base, um. Uh, I think the first question around branding.
Branding.
Yes, what's that face, what's that front? What's that they are being, so they attach from there? Because we're in that four regions, not this place, sir. So I know, I listen to, and discussion, we talk that freedom, freedom, freedom. Sierra Leone is not freedom. Yeah, so if we look at all, I know seeing Madame Fermi talk that, you, you, you get offices that all the eh provinces, yeah, I agree with that. Because I recall it before you register. It's a.
So you are looking at expanding, expanding into the other provinces. Okay, thank you very much.
Not just looking at, not, not just expansion, establishment.
The establishment. Okay, so uh we're going through um the first ready. Her question is around, obviously, the cush and the brain drain, the workforce that are wiping out since Sierra Leone through the cush. And the second aspect of it is diaspora and having the opportunity to remotely vote online to via embassies across the world, and then about party establishment in other provinces here and there. Thank you.
The cush epidemic is a huge problem. And even when we travel out from Eton, other borders there now, they are secured and borders are solid and contained, we can be pushed inside Sierra Leone. And the point you make is the strongest, most valid point. The one they made, they take, in fact, they're now inside the jail. The product German, and they get the company German, they get the so fit there, because so fit there now, it matters. We, Bobo, they, they, and the only solution that you can think of is jail. I don't, they talk against that for as long as the cush epidemic has started. They do not live in incarceration, not for jail business. And if you not attack, and somebody, some people, I can say this on camera, there are people that are becoming multimillionaires.
Yeah.
On suffering of the next president. Then they make money, hand for a piece. And the things that, when they, the people, they say, they fight cush, they are looking at the problem. If you not attack them from bottom up and from top down, you will never have a solution. Again, for me, it sticks to the absence of leadership, it sticks, sticks to the absence, we have, they've broken up gender equality, social welfare equality, youth gender equality.
Wow.
Sports gender equality, you have a blocked cabinet. Can somebody tell us what they are doing? People where they import from what are here, is they tell you the experience they list, they have in breathing in goods and things into Sierra Leone. Some office and they go, you know, they want to, they don't know what it means, they don't know what it means. So the country is poor us. But until and unless the leadership is totally committed, but if you don't see the people, and for some people. If you don't see the poverty, you don't smell the poverty. They're driving at two hundred hours an hour. You don't see the suffering. So how can you address it? If you do not, let the minister, they all go walk around the hospital, let them go, they go walk around the mall. They go go see for themselves, maybe they can begin to realize the enormity of the problem.
Thank you, madam, and then the next one is about voting remotely online.
They should do it, and we should put pressure on them. We begin with a letter, like in the blitz, and we, there's no reason why we cannot start a petition. Let every continent, we begin engage, United States, London, all sides, begin to put pressure on them. And that is where the pressure on the minis, the members of parliament comes in. If in record time, you can remove just by duly, you can, it's not, there's nothing in the, in the constitution that says, we don't need to take it to parliament either.
Yeah.
All we need is to be the slave, structures to be put in place.
And it comes the responsibility of citizens out there, they can do petition, send it around, for us to have the right to vote remotely in diaspora. So any one of us out there, those on Zoom, Facebook Live, anyone here can lead that one, and we are happy to share it now.
We have four years.
Yeah.
To make it happen.
Yeah, so in the next one, it can happen. Yes.
Okay.
So, so, so the next question.
The next question is about me and the district. It came so much in my talk, I don't know, before we begin officially, I said the only place that I have not run is every single chick dog, is Faraba. I explained about Koyoman, where they drive in a village, they recognize me.
Yeah.
I spoke about the children, I believe to Eton, to do their, how they stand their place.
Yeah.
So, I comforted, in fact, I have my set places where I stay. Then village German, over hotel, and then we test, not by American, we pitch, Nanette, we entertain the beginning, then McDonald's toys, they, they, they gather them. Nanette, we play music, we have the shape toys, we cook food, we have the shape dinner, in all the districts. And lots of them, and they go at the mother, and sleep.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we can just add to that as well. We intend for forty-five before, so we talk about now, we be questioning, one thing, what happened with that, we know say, salon, there's sixteen districts. So we have plan for visit every district. Then, like you say, some of them, we think, ah, because Faraba, like new district, like, one of them, you are carrying me. Okay, so you know.
Tell me, it's for me.
Yeah, thank you very much, Cecilia. I think uh we have a answer, but before that, let me just read this quickly, uh Madame Fermi call. This is coming from demand three eight, um from the Zoom. Um said, Madame Cole, what can we do as Sierra Leoneans in the diaspora to take our country forward? That's one. And the second one, what contribution can we, and should we make? This is a non-political question. I believe that is around charity, um but one from the heart, with love for Mama Salon. So yes, um I think the most important one in her question is what contribution can Sierra Leoneans make out there? That is, we can do GoFundMe, you can create that one out there. And we have uh uh account, we have people, they can donate money to, yes, so that one is okay. I will just leave you to answer the question.
We do have, we have a GoFundMe page. You go on the Facebook page we're using right now.
Yeah.
We have a GoFundMe there.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, it's a PayPal, because having a bank account here is a little more complicated.
Yeah.
But it's a PayPal account, and we have a GoFundMe page.
Yeah. Okay, so um.
I must agree to contribute.
Yeah, what can they do?
Now that's all we.
They can come and join the party.
A, join, and B, we can have sales.
Yeah.
I see no reason why we cannot even have shadow, like what you mean, they do, we bring a shadow, how do we? Have a team, focused on education. And when we publish, we must have some kind of publication, whether like online or in physical paper, where we come up with creative ideas, or look, I came up with an idea for the, 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 um ID cards. Children under eighteen should be free. Pensioners, we not, we not say, causing the pension, so I see over a thousand for months. Should be at a grossly reduced rate. Ignore them.
Okay, so we have the gentleman in the white, and then after which we have the lady, like sitting for office. So yes, the gentleman in the right, yeah.
I'm Madame Fermi, uh I don't interact with you few times or like Twitter, mine is practical. Um, my question is that, I know Sierra Leone is in a crossroad. And I believe say, definitely this phase will pass. And I believe say, it's a phase that we Sierra Leoneans are using to educate ourselves. Because if you go down the marketplace, maybe they might go, they say, my guy mobile phone, yeah, smartphone, you watch everything where they happen. They, they watch the other Chinese state. So I believe say, we do it in a crossroad. But the greatest problem, I believe say, we get in a Sierra Leone, nah, as we don't know, that corruption. How can we start educating our people that corruption is really destroying their lives? That's my question.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll go to the lady, yes, if she can ask.
Hello, Sunny, I want to say a big thank you for taking time out for come talk to me this afternoon. I mean, I so appreciate you, your strength, your tenacity, and all what you done with all what you've done until you still come strong and fighting, so you get the support. But um two question we want to ask, because it's like Sierra Leone, you get this magic now, just accept what is happening, we don't care. You talk to people, they say, oh, you cannot do anything, or just forget about it. So it's like, who is going to fight the fight for letting things change? Nobody wants to, most of the people don't want to do it. I was expecting this one to be part four, when you hear all the complaints of Sierra Leone on social media. I thought this one would be part, people are calling us, we need to get for say, and say a peace. And I will move forward, because that's the movement, that's the thing. And when you have this, I mean, some people, they might tell, say, we they can't do this thing today. And few of them were saying, oh, don't go down that path, it, look what you can't do. It can, it can't be supported, so we pay the sacrifice, and we will get there. So that was the question, say, where we are the campaign, we open up to you for be the first female Sierra Leone president. So with, I was saying, what you go do, for you don't do that, you talk like, you can't, I'm talking to you, I think, I get it, I believe. But I have to say it for.
Yeah.
To the way you listen. And then, the second question is, I hear somebody on social media was saying that they would like to partnership with you to work, so that we can move salon forward, maybe I should like to agree with you. So are you willing to join other small parties then, to come together, and make Sierra Leone a better country? Who is all you and me.
Thank you, and then we have one more question, and then, yes, yes, my, my, yes, yeah.
Hello, everyone, my name is Zaina. And the same thing, this have done, they is active, Madame Fermi, a lot of times now, it's hard, I mean, people have times, sometimes. So if you're good for finding it today, and put a, a face.
To their name.
And I would just go, so what you this is, I say, you that are really, really tough, okay, you are, you basically tough, and I thank you for standing behind you for everything where you are going, thank you, we tear you from all over. And so, one question about the Unity Party, I notice you talked to me, and I say, Una, you take me there, I seen a court, without this, um disqualification, they are entirely poor. When they give, we are not, keep unable to participate in the last election. So I just, I just want for know, if you get more for telling me about around that, what you, if you go do, what you Una go do, and I'm not joining United, or maybe eventually I go, so what you Una go do, for Una, cost them all the day, for when the party goes, could be qualified in future elections, so this way, you know, we quit itself again, when you have been twenty, twenty-three, so that we were able to get some party, not possibly go by God's power, push, and for now, you go stand. And just for me, for just adding, um, which Una don't, we all, Una don't talk about the MPs there, we hear. It is really true, for now, we know it's the MPs there. Example is, I remember back then, where we go, that was the one O one candidates.
Yeah.
Everybody, the escorts, African, and Sierra Leoneans, we also prepared the, for that election, eh, for Leuven. When we, that was, that was the last time we had about that, never again, ten to now, I don't know what you did, you know, my friend, what, what you in the, for right, for whatever, she did, never again, after you. So this, that's very wrong, we need to know what you have, this, and you do, and it's a really good thing, the plan about to turn, you hear that true.
Thank you so much, so the first question was around corruption, and the other question, we know this, she's, she's a queen, so she's not Yum Kela, but she will answer that question. And then, how can we ensure that those who are, who we are voting in to become members of parliament, they are actually doing the work? And thank you very much, after which moment we will come to you, yeah.
So, um, the corruption.
Yeah.
I, I remember in twenty, when President Liu won in twenty eighteen, he said, he's used to make corruption unpopular.
Yeah.
In reality, he has made corruption, corruption, it's not Palestinian process. And it is evident, there are certain aspects of governance that emit, that comes from leadership. If we ever walk in, for about what? And corruption has now been normalized, it has now been segregated. We see that when they go teach other in sale for grade, no grade, they were tried to the patent. Publicly disgraced. When Naha Teller Pierce found fake receipts from the president's visit abroad, she was sacked. And not only was she sacked, they had a trial that was not openly considered well. And the report has not been declared toxic. So in fact, a woman for losing, her reputation, her integrity comes into question, and her job, and her name, and the report is toxic. So we are normalizing corruption. We see, not to be saying, lawyers, they go for go elect by association of presidents. We see where they shared the paper, they like, when there was a rule, there was a plan, there was a system in place. What do we see? We see the president himself. They go give the blessing of the immediate meaning, elected. So when you have the head, has a problem. And what we have now, in Sierra Leone, I give you not, we get a leadership malfunction. Where the judicial, the institutions, corruption has now become a way. Look, when you, they had a complaint at the beginning. When you don't say this person, let just take Parian as an example, you are here to find it. You have been found in corruption, you are dismissed, if you are going, they design.
You need go there.
I want to go to him there, I went back, I took a lot of eighty thousand pounds there, and I, it's coming to this. And then, I've been in train, I want to go to Uomo, I know here. I would like expensive tools from here, like from train, you know, I should get, I said, the down there. For that, for, who do I please, they design, let me go, who fashion, who fashion market? They motivate the students, they sell, they want to see them, that goes, and if I go one week, complete the board, with the board, with a couple of, please.
Yes.
Complete, so after we come back to those ideas, those, you know, I don't know how to put.
Yes, I think.
Change their mentality.
Yeah.
Again, I'm sorry, but I really get what happened from leadership. When you begin for see the leader, begin for take swift action within the top layers. You begin for make example of one or two, but what do they see? When you do something that is corrupt, violent, evil, they are only the violent, they use small drop, and put it back in the picture.
Yeah.
So it comes back again to, it's like here, if you get, like a family, you have four sisters. What did I see my two elder sisters doing? What did I learn from them? So it comes back again to, it's like here, if you get, like a dream as a family, you have four sisters. What did I see my two elder sisters doing? What did I learn from them? It explains why I am. But if, as, now, you know, people, they see, excuse my French, they see, oh, God, I don't think. Therefore, I don't think, they go and cause it, you know, thinking. So where are we going? And it has to begin from, and even the way we talk to each other, has a problem. But you ask me some extremely powerful questions.
Yeah, the Yum Kela.
You asked about the K K Y syndrome. The human being is the most unreliable, volatile being created by God. There is no guarantee waiting much among capable of doing. I am blown away by our capacity to do evil to one another. One guarantee I can make is I cannot guarantee that I will live to twenty twenty. None of us, I can't.
Nobody guaranteed for two more.
In my quiet moments, I worry about good health. I worry about what kind of, after all this work, I don't know, what happens to unity party. So you fear not me, not for lack of confidence, I may attempt to add. When they are telling me, they came to David, who I don't want, he said, mommy, don't go. I said, what's my dear, I get for combing teeth. I get for cleaning my teeth. If the woman, then, don't be, don't engage, don't be compost, I won't want it. Then you for me, say, man, I don't want, how do I stand in front of my mirror and wash my teeth and look at myself in the mirror again? I beg you, you have to go. So for us, we're not all going to be the same. But in terms of probability, how many men have we had, and how many do we have? So maybe the time is now for us to just think out of the box. Other question you ask, uh, what was my other question? K K Y?
Yes, K K Y.
K K Y.
K K Y been calm, it give us so much, um, hopes. Yeah.
And that is why, being a unity, what we're thinking about is having like a leadership council. So making, so nobody is guaranteed being frank there. In terms of in health, you don't know what happens. So we, we, we want to make the party, where the party can function as an entity on its own. I have been useful to unity party, in that I have been the best and the boss. Had I not been that, my meat of soccer, they accuse me of, any of your progress, they give us, they say, I'm, blah, blah, blah. The prediction was, when you see the last elections soon, I don't know. When I receive, I see the shock, the trauma of being in C I D. When you see them, didn't be got there, C I D, say, for this one, you go, you go, no, for say, the very next day, I was in the steps of parliament, in my black. Demanding to go up to parliament, where I was. So, and it's been a few years now for me to begin to expose who I am, what am I made of? Why do I want to go? What do I want? What do I want to see? I think it's an element of trust, but when we're voting leaders, now we go to the team. You know, if now I'm one, or six, six. I can say, well, you don't have to, you don't have to speak. Let me put all the picture, or food, or food, and that all inside.
No sweet.
Has to taste.
Thank you very much, my next first female president. If at all you're able to address some of the other questions, and I think we don't talk about, and we will continue for follow on, and we will continue for support on. So, mommy, yes, you get question for us, and then we have the gentleman there, yeah?
And I also have a question and a comment.
Okay.
And maybe talk later. But plenty more, maybe, I could say, for you, you know, you tell me, I go with you to President's book. Where we go to give a letter and what we write, for the answer. Send the letter, and I'll send this to you, and I'll send it to the president. I don't need a book, going to, uh, so the states of.
State Avenue.
State Avenue, but by the state of it. I understand, oh, woman, you ask, I'm pushing, in reality, for young, to that, I don't know, I believe, you, wait, after, fifty minutes. So, I don't know, they talk for present, but I talk, I say, me and, yes, so a lot of this, they say, people, they, they can't. You want to be the home, they say, for all of us. But I believe that, because this lady asked about joining the.
You need to. Practice, yeah.
And, uh, she's done so already.
Hmm.
As you know, she's the chairman, but actually, the mother chairman, of course, we are not individual parties, but we say, we face, of which, for what, and I think we pick. And so, come, we agree so much, so, come, we stop that, let the nation, and the nation will suffer, because, you know, we even show what is in the book. And I want to say, we want to show what is in the book. And then, and mentioned twenty twenty twice. And to say, not only, I, I have to say, to the dead. But he also say, why do they do with him? You have people, they say, they, they, they get together, we enforce their foundation, maybe they just say now, and not one foundation, and not one, it's not a cap.
Yes.
That's only huge. And if we have stopped again, I don't know if stop, or what my plan, I think, who is not, I don't know, each other, they, 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 they.
Yes, sir.
But between now and twenty twenty eight, who knows what in the world?
Yeah.
Who knows, whether, we know, we don't get, one party, who knows, we, we, we don't, we not, we not, we not, not one of the person, I also say, even, they said, all the person, of whose side they go. They don't need this job, and the legal system. Why, calling, not just, hey, say, it's like, you say, leave me, they did the same thing. So, now, start a party of our own, it's almost like a suffer.
Before then, they go.
Before then, they go. So this year, they, they, they all get for.
Walk together, yeah. Yeah.
Say, um, you know, this was okay.
Yeah, thank you so much, ma. Yeah.
So, I would like to.
Yeah. Sorry, guys, we just have fifteen minutes to close. And we have just two more minutes for end this open session. But please, if you do have any questions, you can still forward it to, um.
I would really like that, Femi, answer my sister's question, because come twenty twenty eight, we wanted to see her as a candidate we can report. But in twenty twenty three, she didn't have that opportunity. So we always want, what we do, is get some, make sure she's our candidate. Thank you. And then, the other slogan we are like, looking at American politics at moment.
Yeah.
Come on, I heard, say, we are fighting for the future.
Yeah.
And a slogan like that, even a Friday, I'm pushing as too, we have to understand. That we are fighting.
For the future, yeah.
So we have to come up with a slogan. That can, that can cascade from the highest.
Yeah.
To the lowest.
Yeah.
And everybody understand what is the one, or what, what's in our cash flow.
Yes. Okay, time.
Unless she is our candidate, we can go for her.
Definitely, she's going to address that candidate aspect before we, um, close this session, yeah.
So come across the post.
Yeah.
I want all this way, people can.
Yes, sir. So we have just one, last more questions, I think, yeah.
Just, uh, a comment, a question, um, Dr. Yum Kela's name has been mentioned, and it was one of those, all these meetings, I draw from time. Madam Femi, you spoke very well, there is a sense of deja vu in that, to be honest.
Yes.
But I want to ask what my brother said here. I'm talking about outside the western area, in hardcore S F P, A P C areas. What's the mood of the people? Do they buy into the unity brand, and do you think they'll vote for you? Or will you be allowed to, to, to campaign hardcore A P C S F P areas? Because that's where the, the thing is right now, the western area, it's got a sound of, A P C S F P areas.
Yeah, so.
Push that down.
Thank you, thank you so much. I think all of us here have the responsibility to promote Unity Party. We are the strong, held, um, A P C S F P and what have you. And that's why this meeting specifically was organized to make sure that she sent that message out and to reach out to everyone out there. So my next first, um, female president, um, the, our sister here, and our sister there. I just want you to just, don't wrap up on those, um, point.
You, uh, that's a good question, because if they did it there, what's to stop them doing it again? And what's then, and this is a whole thing we've cascade, can don't pardon. Right now, they're looking like constitution. Only God knows what they're going to come up with.
Yes.
And they will take it to parliament, where they have given themselves a majority, and they will pass it. Whether it's increasing the term time for five years to seven, whether it's increasing the term minutes from two to three. These are all questions that we must be asking now.
Yeah, and the other thing, sorry, madam, um, next first president is that they want to know if you will be the flag bearer for Unity Party come twenty twenty eight? And what is your message or your slogan?
No, what has to happen? Exactly what she is saying with the K K Y party, and history, it's itself, what you read on the discus, have like a leadership. And let me make something else quite clear. One thing we are on land, for me, education, I don't exercise, I don't. In order for us to shift this government, we're going to have to come together.
United.
We try with COP, as Susan can look, we came together because both gave for a better Sarayon. But the com- the components of COP, the scale of the components of COP, will determine our success. If any single party really and truly thinks we can shift. Who are now controlling the police, the army, the judiciary, the institutions, the rep, the E P R C. It is a complicated battle. But we do not wait for twenty twenty, start to fight it, to begin yesterday. We begin to shut them up and show them up now. We begin to do special on the parliamentarians, what on earth are you guys doing? Some of us don't think, you know, go there, me, I don't think I know that maybe, at a start, maybe I know ten parliamentarians. Maybe, maybe twelve, nine, no, I'm sorry, there are hundred and thirty-four, that's five of them, for the parliament. We don't know, why, I mean. It is not a question that Unity Party alone can fix, can answer. It is going to be collectively putting there under pressure. And the pressure must set right now.
But Unity Party can be a pressure group.
We can see that, yes. We can see that of the pressure. One step to the focus, and then, one step to the focus, there are so many areas. ID cards, the constitution. Why do we come together as Unity Party and begin to look at what changes should be in the constitution? We want to accomplish that, we want to accomplish we, this, and this should go, president should not be.
So time to time, you know, time to die. Time, so she's not going to say, uh, to be voted off time, so say, time you take you. So what we've gathered here tonight, you know, one, we need to be checking on our local representative, either councillors, um, members of parliament, local resident ministers. And also to sell our Unity Party, it all, all of our responsibility, all of us have Facebook, WhatsApp group. You know, we can be taking our votes from social media, Facebook, and we share them. Or we can put them on our timeline, on our WhatsApp, you know, on our groups, that's how we help to, um, share Unity Party. And for like the slogan, definitely, um, um, she's coming up with that. And when it's come to like the leadership of the party, you know, I lo- I just love this right now. It's an open policy she have right now, because you never know, like she stated, I just want to read, give it what she stated earlier on that. You know, doing what they happen tomorrow. You might tell me, you feed, or you, 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 you feed everything to be the leader of Unity Party. This is what she's trying to pass across. So also, we get this, a open hand, so that you don't know to know, it don't form Unity Party, but like it says, it not means they end up for the day forever. Waiting it will be, whether they will be, for maybe stepping, or what they put together, for them to come and work with Unity Party. So Unity Party will continue for day, after waiting on day, I hope said that message they clear now. Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, not to pass in die. Maybe one of us can be the leader. So she just want to say thank you. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just say thank you, yeah. Yes. Yeah.
And troubles for dedication to the last hour, or three hours.
Online.
For their online, and for participating, and they see all, and they go through all the nation. And after about two weeks of visiting, I will respond, and I will respond, and be there, everybody, uh, to messages, so they not take time for that. So I think I'm for saying, I think, for one, it means, uh, I open, and I need a one, my time is short, and more.
Thank you. So, thank you, viewers online, and it's been great here, and it's been wonderful. Like, the next first female president have stated, you know, a young leader, not to pass to die. So that position is open for anybody within or the particular official, they are capable to lead. Okay, so we are looking forward for you to join the Unity Party, you know. Um, thank you very much, being a journalist here, moderating this all important town meeting. And if you didn't follow us on Zoom or Facebook, please go to Madame Femi Facebook page, follow her now. Catch up with all the session there, and I will see you soon, land that we like.